Good evening and welcome to the May 28th, 2020 meeting of the Yorktown zoning board of appeals. My name is Gordon Fine, I chair the board. Joining me tonight, albeit virtually, is Bob Fahey, Bill Gregory, John Meistrick, our newest member Anthony Tripodi, who was a member, left the board and now is back again. Our special counsel, Adam Rodriguez, our building inspector, John Landy, and our secretary, Linda Daley. First thing we need to do is I'm going to read you some directions since doing this virtually for this meeting for the first time. This meeting is being broadcast live on the town cable TV channels. If you would like to join and participate in this Zoom meeting, click the registration link on the town's website calendar page for this meeting. All meeting participants will remain without video and unmute until their items fall in order to simplify the view on the screen. Those joining by computer can use that chat function in Zoom to contact the meeting host, Robin, if needed. If you are a member of the public and would like to speak during the public comment portion of an application, please raise your hand by clicking the raise hand button on the bottom of the participants list, or send a chat message to the host. You may request to speak or have the host read your comments or questions. Please do not speak until invited to do so by the chairman or host, and identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're joining the Zoom by phone only, all phone calls remain on mute in order to minimize background noise. Press star nine to raise your hand to the host to indicate you would like to speak. When you are invited to speak, please identify yourself by stating your name for the record. If you're watching this meeting on television and would like to comment on an item, you may call into the Zoom meeting using the phone number and meeting information shown in the host box on the screen. Remember to tell the host you would like to comment, click the raised hand button on the bottom of the participants list. Send a chat message to the host using the chat button on the bottom of the Zoom window, or if you're on the phone, press star nine. That being said, move on to our meeting. First thing we need to do is set up next month's meeting. So if you're on the new business agenda tonight, you must send out your mailings to next month's meeting on between June 1st and June 10th. The meeting's going to be held on June 25th, probably once again virtual, but the mailings must still be sent out between June 1st and June 10th. To determine who you send your mailings to, you contact town's tax office, tell them you're sending out a zoning application, and you need to know who your neighbors are that you have to contact. You'll have a form from the application that lists, last on of your list, who you have to send the applications to, the notices to, and their addresses. You get those addresses and names from the tax office, write them down on that form, and you have to submit the form to the town attorney's office before the next meeting, showing who you sent it to, along with a copy of the notice. You also have to send the mailings out by first-class mail. They do not have to go out by certified mail, but they do have to go out by cert, first-class mail, along with a certificate of mailing. Certificate of mailing is a simple form you get at the post office that shows that you mailed that item on a specific date to a specific person. So you must submit to the, to the town attorney's office before the next meeting, hopefully not the same day of, for the next meeting, a copy of the notice you sent, the form stating who you sent it to, a copy of your sign affidavit with a photograph of the sign on the property, along with the affidavit being signed, and all of those white receipts from the post office showing when you mailed the notices out to your neighbors. If you're still doing it by certified mail for some reason, you don't need the green postcards. We only need the white receipt showing when it was mailed. It's not everybody signs to their certified mailings. Sure you post your signs conspicuously on the property, otherwise you will not be able to open up your hearing at the next meeting if any of these items have not been complied with. So once again, the meeting is June 25th. The mailings must go out between June 1st and June 10th. Now that we're done with that, we need to go over last month's minutes. Actually, it's not last month's, it's February's minutes was the last meeting we had. Everybody on the board received a copy? Any more of any comments or questions on the minutes? Okay, that being said, we approve the minutes of the February meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Okay. We'll now go on to the new business agenda. Now, these are all items that'll be opened up hopefully next month. These applicants don't necessarily have to be with us tonight at the meeting. I don't know if they are or not, but I'm going to go through the agenda and any events. First application is Hannon, 1271 Baldwin Road, application for a special use permit for accessory apartment. I'll handle that administratively. Refer to the building department in public hearing next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
On favor? Next one is Hoffman, 3808 Prompound Road, application renewals of special use permit for accessory apartment. We'll handle that administratively, refer to the building department and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
One thing I left out about the meetings is normally we do site visits, but given the current situation, we're not going out in groups to do site visits anymore. If I say we're doing a site visit, what that means is the individual members of the board might come by to take a look at the property, but they are not going either onto your property or into your homes. They're just doing basically a drive-by to see what the property looks like.
Drones.
If the application you're asking for is something that is not visible from the street, like it's the back of the side yard or it's the rear of the house, it'd be very helpful for us if you take a picture of the area where the application is for and submit it to the town attorney for the next meeting, so we have at least a photo of it, so we know what part of the house we're in. Moving on, we have Abrams, 3461-8 Sagamore Avenue, application renewals of special use permit for accessory apartment. We'll handle that administratively, refer to the building department and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Aye.
Left her, 38, I'm sorry, 387 Grand Springs Road. Application allow a new dwelling on a lot with a side yard setback equal to the front of 27 feet. Remember, as 40 feet is required. A front yard setback of 35 feet, a minimum of 40 feet is required. A lot width of building at 97.1 feet, a minimum of 100 feet is required. This is again, is a 387 Grand Springs Road. We refer this to the building department, we refer it to the planning department as well. Set it down for a site visit and public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Clifford, 1590 Amazon Road, application allow existing front handicap ramp and deck with a front yard setback of 27 feet, or a minimum of 40 feet is required. Refer to the building department, set it down for public hearing and a site visit. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Atlantic Appliances, 2010 Maple Hill Street, that's at the tribal shopping center. Application allow a roof and portico with a front yard setback of 67 feet, minimum of 75 feet is required. Property's at a C2 zone. I'll refer to the building department, refer also to the planning department, set it down for a site visit. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? 3D Development, you guys may not have this on your agenda, it was added later. 3D Development is 2710 Lexington Avenue, that's the golf range on Lexington Avenue. Application for special use permit for the storage of new vehicles. Refer this to the building department, planning department, conservation board. Set down for a site visit. County planning too, I think, will be for it too, just a bare mountain. And a public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Okay, moving on to the adjourned agenda. We have Sarla, which is 675 Swallow River Road. That's been adjourned at the applicant's request. As she says, last adjourned was December 12th. I don't know what the current status is, but we'll adjourn it again. It was never opened with us.
Send a letter of inquiry.
It's been on for a while.
You'll do that. Ask our attorney to send a letter.
Not a problem.
Musello, 608 Grand Springs Road, that's also adjourned. It's for a special use permit for accessory apartment. It's renewal. I don't know why that's, was adjourned. Is there another, a letter go out to them as well? Then we have the Dorno. Robin, is Dorno present?
Yes, John Scavelli's here, who is representing the.
Let me just read this in. This is a Dorno, there's actually two applications on this. It's a 146 Cordial Road. Application allow accessory structure with the side yard setback of 5.5 feet, or minimum of 15 feet is required. Height of 17 feet 10 inches, or maximum 15 feet is required. And a combined footprint of all accessory structures, 86% of the main dwelling, or maximum 80% is allowed. Also have, back to the agenda, application allow existing shed with a rear yard setback of six and a half, 6.5 feet, a minimum of 10 feet is required. New application, the mailings were in order. The old application was already open. Want to give us your appearance for the record, please?
Yes, this is John Scavelli. I'm the professional engineer representing John at Dorno for the proposed application.
When we last left off on this, we had a couple of, we had first started with the application for the accessory structure, then the shed popped up. So we had to handle that as well. So we had everything put together. The memo from the building department dated March 12th. This is as to the shed, just since he's inspected the property, nothing further after that. So going back, let's, let's go back to the first application first. When we left off, we had asked the building inspector, John, if you're, if you're there, we had asked for some input regarding the wood boiler law and the compliance that the applicant has had. He's had a wood boiler there since the law was passed. We don't know if it's in compliance with the current code. Any information on that? This is John Landy, building inspector.
He's on mute.
I did get the information you did ask, but that was a while ago. I'm going to have to relook into it. I do remember something and talking to the owner, and the boiler is inside. So it's not an outdoor wood boiler as our law says. It's a wood oil-fired boiler, which are allowed.
So that doesn't have anything to do with the code as far as outdoor boilers?
Correct.
And does it meet the, the required setbacks and, and measurements for, for a boiler of that nature in wood structure?
Yeah, yeah, so it would. He was supposed to get me, if I remember correctly, he was supposed to get me all the documentation on it, so I can present that, but I, since all this happened, I don't think he did that.
Okay, so now let, let me ask the applicant, the applicant's representative. The new structure that's being proposed is going to take the place of the current garage, isn't it?
Correct, that's correct.
So what's going to happen to the boiler?
So the boiler, they'd have to file a proper permit paperwork.
But is it going back inside the garage?
It would go back inside the new garage.
Okay, and as we discussed last time as well, we had asked, well, what the necessity was for the height of the proposed garage. Need any, any lower?
Okay, yes. I mean, I do have some pictures and things to share regarding, you know, if you're looking at from the street. So the owner is looking to, to have a slightly higher roof pitch to basically match with, with the height of, of his home. And if you look, the neighbor's home to the left is actually even higher than his home. So if you really look at the aesthetics from the streets, you'll see that the current garage that's there, it's a flat roof. It's, it's dilapidated. It's not really in, in character with, with basically the homes that, that are surrounding it. So the, the proposed application is actually just to shift over the garage further from the current left side yard. So actually to, to make the non-conformity, you know, less than what it currently is. And then, you know, as part of the, the proposed variance is for additional height for, for the, for the roof pitch of, of the garage as well.
What's going in the garage if the height has to be that high?
So it would just be storage. It would just be, you know, garage storage for, for cars. You know, there'd be the, the equipment, the boiler equipment in the backside of the garage.
We were talking about two feet 10 inches, correct?
Correct.
Would there be any problem withholding with the 15, holding to the, to the code, to the 15 feet?
For the, for the, for the height?
Yeah, for the height.
Yes, so it, it's more of the, like the aesthetic pitch that, that the owner, you know, if they're looking to make this investment to, you know, improve the, you know, the garage and get rid of the old garage, you know, they're looking to.
It's purely aesthetic.
Correct.
How would the height of the garage compare to the height of the house that it's next to?
So I.
The applicant's house.
Yeah, I do have a section, if that's helpful to share, that, that shows that. So I mean, the, the peak of the roof would be about at where the soffit height of the, of the second story of the existing houses.
So the peak of the garage roof would be lower than the peak of the house roof?
Correct, yes. Yeah, it would be much lower than the peak of that, the house roof.
Now, when we go to, to this, this is a pre-existing shed we're talking about, it's the other application, correct?
Yeah, so to kind of summarize, as part of this application, there was a shed that was determined in the, in the backside of the house that there was not a, a permit that was closed out. So that is actually a separate structure than the garage structure we're, we're talking about. So that shed structure is actually, it only has a six and a half foot setback from the rear yard, whereas a 10-foot setback is required. So that's a part of the, the variance application is for that, the legalization of that existing shed at the, the rear side of the property.
What, what is the, what is that shed being used for now? Is it just storage?
It's just storage.
Does it have to be there? Could he, you know, if we're 86% of the properties being utilized right now, if he were to remove that shed, wouldn't he be in compliance with the, as far as 80%?
Well, that's a different, that's a different question. The question, I was going to follow up with that, Bob, is, is the shed, since the, the garage application came before the shed application, was the shed's footprint built into that 86%?
Correct. So to answer your question there, yes, the, the coverage calculation was including that shed, because that was included in, in the survey that was submitted.
So if you took that shed out, what would the coverage be?
The, I'd have to follow up on that. I do have some rough numbers here that I could probably. So. Yeah, so that shed is.
The question is, you're allowed 80%. So we can get it down to the 80, you wouldn't even, you wouldn't need a variance on that.
Correct. So if it's 369 feet, and it's 80%. So that would put us at 24. Yeah, so if, if the shed were to be removed, it would put it just below, put it 190, it would put it just below the 80% mark.
Because the garage that you're looking to put in is that vigorous or the same size of the current garage?
It's slightly larger, and then it's also a slightly different location that actually pushes.
It's also higher.
Higher, correct.
So if you're getting more storage, which you're building a bigger garage, storage space on top, if we get rid of that shed, you're getting rid of the 86% that you need, bringing it back down to or below the maximum allowed.
Okay, yes. Yep, I see what you're saying.
Anybody else on the board have a comment on, on that part of it or any other part?
No, I already, I already said my thought. I think we're on the same page as far as, as far as where we're going with that.
Anybody else?
I think this was the application that there are multiple accessory structures on the property. I think the history was that some were built, you know, like the shed without zoning board approval, and then, you know, became legalized through sort of a hardship process. And in the decisions, the prior zoning board decision that legalized maybe the pool house or something, you know, said no, no more building of any sort with, no more accessory structures of any sort without zoning board approval. So it's not just a matter that the shed is in the setback, the shed was built, you know, against that prior decision. So, you know, the overall impression, I think, from the history is that we have a lot of accessory structures on this property. And I do have a big concern with the height, because you're adding potential, you know, livable footprint to the house in the sense of the second story of the garage. So I'm wondering if there's some form of a condition we could impose if we were to grant that, that, you know, the floor can't be finished or something, you know, a little unusual.
It's storage only, garage is storage only.
Well, the temptation, you know, the, given the history of this property and the applicant, you know, the, the quote, quote unquote hardship route of getting variances approved, like we're doing now, you know, we're considering now for the shed or anything else, you know, there's a huge possibility that something might be done against the decision and then, you know, attempt to legalize it in the future.
I don't know what you could do to avoid that. You can't really say, you know, you can't finish the inside of the storage area, because that's an enforcement condition. You can't have the building inspector running out all the time to see if the, if the upstairs is ever finished.
Right, so I guess.
From my perspective, I'd really like to get some more information on that wood burning stove inside.
What information?
I would too, in the sense of, does a wood burning stove in a garage maintain that this structure is a garage? We've had situations in the past where adding heat to a building turned it into a music studio and not an accessory structure. So I'm also wondering, maybe a John Landy question, you know, if you have a boiler in a, an accessory building and you're calling that building a garage, is the building still accessory and is it still a garage?
Yeah, absolutely. You can heat a garage at any time you want.
Okay.
What makes it an accessory structure, putting a bathroom in there?
Or, it's not a main use?
No, it's, yeah, it's not a main use. No, I'm, I'm more concerned about the, the fire safety aspect of it. I'd like to get some more information on that.
Well, what information specifically are you looking for? You don't want to get.
Specifically, you know, what type of boiler are we sticking in there? What kind of building codes are applicable to it? Does it have anything to do with the variances that are being asked in terms of the height or location of, of the structure, those kind of things? I think, I think, I think I would feel comfortable granting this thing or not granting it, if I knew that, a little bit more of that technical information.
Can the applicant supply more technical information regarding the boiler? Supplies to the board and the building department for the next meeting?
Yes, I mean, we could follow up on that. Yeah, I believe the owner, you know, was kind of working through, through that, that process with, with our specs.
So I'm going to ask that you follow up on that, get some more information of it for the next meeting. Anybody else on the board, any comments? Anybody in the audience have any comments on this application? Now's the time to either raise your hand or star nine on the phone or whatever. So Robin, let me know if anybody wants to speak.
No one has indicated they wanted to speak.
Based upon that, I'm going to move to adjourn both of the Adorno applications to, to next month's meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, the next application is Lynn. Lynn present?
Yes. Yes, we're here, sir.
Okay, file out here. This is an application for proposed second-floor addition with the rear yard setback of 21.08 feet. Minimum of 30 is required at 2032 Breton Court. Can you give us your appearance for the record, please? Name.
Sorry, what?
Just give us your name for the record, please. You just state your, state your name for the record.
Margaret Lynn.
Okay. All right, you want to give us, the, the mailings were fine according to our legal department? You want to give us a brief rundown of what your application is for?
Uh, yes, one second. I'll be in front of what it is. It's just a second floor porch in the front.
Just putting up a porch?
Oh, and a second floor addition.
Do the board members have the plans?
I don't have them.
Once again, I will try and show this to you. I promise this is now.
Do we have a picture of the site?
I listed one. I have it here as well.
Can you see that? Is that the plans? This is Lynn, that's the plans?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody in the board see that? Yes.
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 I'm going to spend the rest of the meeting trying to re-fold this.
Throw it to the side.
We're just going to re-fold it later. I'm not home, I can't do that. Okay, we have a memo from the building department dated February 21st. We have no objections to the application. All right, this is just about a nine-foot variance that we're looking to do here, looking to do here. Anybody on the board have a comment on it? Don't, anybody in the audience have a comment on it? Now's the time to speak up. Robin, let me know if anybody wants to.
I have a, I have a question. The existing structure does not violate the setbacks?
Not according to what the application is. John, anything, anything on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so basically, we're adding a porch and a second-story addition above the porch, and that's why the variance, or the need for the variance arises. Is that correct?
John?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
There's two Johns, I know, it's tough. I can't really look at, I usually at the board table, I look at somebody, but I can't today. I'm looking at everybody at the same time. All right. Will you have to a site visit on this? I wish I could tell you. I don't recall if we did one back in February for this meeting or not. I believe we did. I don't think it's any, it's not a big variance. I think it's not going to change any part of the character of the neighborhood to the improvement, actually, the look of the structure. Anybody have any comments on that from the board, any other opinions on that?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to refresh my memory. Is this a, what's the style of the house? Is it a cake or a ranch? What are we, what are we looking at?
Is Glenn?
It's a, it's a, a, a ranch.
Ranch.
One story ranch.
Bob, if you remember, this one was right off Allen here.
Okay, okay, I remember now. I remember now. Thanks. So this is, it's similar then to all the other houses around Allen?
It's not going to change, it's not going to change anything in the neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, I would move that we grant the application for, for a proposed second-floor addition with the rear yard setback of 21.08 feet. Minimum of 30 feet is required at 2032 Breton Court with the stipulation that this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line, and that the addition be, be built in substantial conformity to the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next application.
Sorry, so what do I?
Your application was, your application was granted. You're going to be getting your, the decision, you won't get a decision till next month after the minutes are done. You can discuss with Mr. Landy, give him a call in his office to tell you what your next steps are.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. I appreciate your time.
You're welcome.
Yep, thank you much.
Is Mr. Phil, is Phil Gamo on board?
Yes, yeah, I'm here.
Yes?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, Phil Gamo is an application accessory apartment. Previous one expired back in 1997. Per our legal department, they said one of the mailings was not sent out. That was to Mr. Tambasio, was not, there was no mailing. I mean, he was a neighbor that was required to get a mail.
Oh, that, I, I nailed them out to the people that I got the list from.
That's the message I got from, from the legal department. But in addition, home wasn't inspected by the building department yet because of COVID situations, so they couldn't come in. So in any event, we wouldn't be able to consider it till they inspect the apartment anyway.
Oh, I sent him pictures. He told me to send him pictures.
Yeah, they can't, they can't do that virtually, because they have to make sure everything's working properly.
Okay.
So I'm not going to open it, because we don't have the proper mailings. What I suggest you do is, we're going to put this over for next month, because the building inspector. because the building inspector still has to get in, so we'll see if he can do that before the next month's meeting. But I would ask you to contact uh our town attorney's office and see what the situation was with the mailings.
Yeah, because I mean, this is the second time I, I did all those mailings and it's just what I.
I don't know, I don't know why. That's the message I got. So I don't have, I don't have the actual mailings.
So I'll go, I'll go.
Ask them in the office, but in the meantime, we have to put it over anyway.
Yeah, yeah.
So work that out with them and work it out with the building department as far as inspection. Once they're, they're permitted to go in, we'll see what they can do.
So I need to call the building department?
Contact the building department and contact the town attorney's office about the mailings.
Okay, and who do I speak to at the building department?
Say it's to John Landy.
Oh, John, okay. And.
He can, he, he could actually talk to any one of the, the uh clerks and they can make an appointment for someone to go out and inspect the apartment.
Okay, and now, will I have to mail all eight of these again?
Or just? Walk to the town attorney's office first and see if there's a problem with that one mailing. For something that you didn't have to mail to, then no, you don't have to.
Oh, you know, know what I think that was? It, it could be the house right next door to me got sold to the Lanisys. And I mailed it to them and they never told me to.
Yeah, talk, talk to the town attorney's office, see if you can figure that out with them, so you may not have to do all the mailings.
Okay, and your next meeting is June?
June twenty-fifth.
June twenty-fifth? This, this same procedure like this?
Correct. Hopefully, well, I would hope not, but probably.
Alright, alright, so.
Alright, so I move that we adjourn this to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll see you next month.
If I may, just uh, Mr. Philagamo, you can ask for Peggy Anne Thorpe in the town attorney's office, and I just alerted her to the issue, so she should be aware.
Yeah, I spoke to her last week and uh, yeah, I, I, I sent her all the receipts and the picture. I thought I had everything.
Yeah, she's the one that told me it was missing.
Yeah, it's probably because, like I said, that house just got sold and the new owners probably, I didn't get the address of the new owners. I had the old owners and I mailed it to them. That's probably a problem, so I'll talk to Peggy Anne.
Alright.
Alright, thank you guys.
You're very welcome.
Stay safe.
Our next applicant is Zuckerman. Zuckerman present?
Hello.
Yes, there you are.
Hi, my name is Nora Hildinger. I'm here representing Charlotte Zuckerman.
Okay, let me read this then. This is application allowed existing addition with a side yard setback of twenty feet for a minimum of thirty feet is required and a combined side yard setback of seventy-six feet. A minimum of eighty feet is required at twelve eighty-seven Baldwin Road. The mailings were in order for our legal department. Again, you just wanna give us uh your name for the record again, please?
My name is Nora Hildinger.
And what's your position with the app?
I am the agent representing the um applicant.
Alright, you wanna just tell us what the nature of the petition is?
Um, this is for the property at twelve eighty-seven Baldwin Road. Um, the home has been owned by Charlotte Zuckerman since nineteen sixty-nine. Mrs. Zuckerman passed away in October twenty nineteen. And Kat Gillian Cunningham is the executor of the will and um Charlotte Zuckerman's daughter. Um, the existing addition that I'm seeking variance for is a sunroom which has existed in its present state since nineteen seventy-nine. The existing addition has a side yard setback of twenty feet where thirty is required and a combined side yard setback of seventy-six feet where eighty is required. With the, an economic hardship to meet the R one eighty zoning requirement. This hardship uh is, was not self-created. Miss Kat Gillian Cunningham inherited the house from her mother back in October when her mother passed away. The sunroom has existed in its present state since nineteen seventy-nine. If the variance is granted, it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Um, for these reasons, I respectfully request a variance of ten feet for side yard setback and four feet for combined. Thanks.
I believe we did a site visit on this back in February, I think.
I believe you did.
This was pretty far off the road.
Correct, you could barely even see it from the road.
And I think when we went there, there was actually an agent in the house. When we knocked on the door.
Oh, a real estate agent?
Yes.
Okay.
Alright, um the memo from the building department dated March twentieth. They have no objections to granting the requested release. Like I said, we did a site visit on this. Um, it doesn't appear to me that this is gonna have any negative impact on the neighborhood as far as the character of the neighborhood. It's been there so long, it kind of is the character of the neighborhood.
Agreed.
Anybody in the board have a comment on this?
When this was erected, was there a permit? Was there, what, what was, did the zoning change or what, what created?
It just was built. It was just.
It just was built without, without?
It was just built without a permit.
Okay.
Anybody else have a comment? Anybody from the audience have a comment on the application? Robin, anybody there?
No, we have no one.
Okay, I would move then that we grant the application to allow an existing addition with a side yard setback of twenty feet. Minimum of thirty is required and a combined side yard setback of seventy-six feet. Minimum of eighty is required at twelve eighty-seven Baldwin Road with usual stipulation. This pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is Wright.
Hello?
Anybody present on Wright?
Yes, Charles Wright.
Okay. This is an application to replace an existing porch with the same setback of twenty-seven feet. Minimum of forty feet is required at thirty-three thirty Peter Lane. Anything, give us your name for the record, please.
Charles Wright.
Hey, this is just, you're, you're taking down an old porch and putting up a new one?
Yeah.
Same footprint?
Yeah, I can.
I have some photos here if I can get them to everybody by looking at it. This looks like, this is it, isn't it?
Yes, um, you can see there's the concrete.
So it's just going down the stairway?
Yeah, I just wanna take down the concrete because it's chipped and some of the stairs are uneven and rebuild a wooden one, but the house is like forty-one feet from the street, so to get the proper you know, distance to go down the stairs, it needs to be.
Another, that's just another view.
Yeah.
Very large dog behind you.
Yeah, that's uh our German shepherd.
We did a site visit on this property as well. Way back when, the good old days, as we'll remember them. We have a memo from the building department dated March twelfth. They just said they did an inspection of the property. Anybody in the board have a comment on the application?
So that's gonna be replaced with the wood instead of the concrete?
Yeah, so um, what the architect has is knock down everything that's, you know, the, the cinder block up, there's footings. And then um, there'll be a wood substructure and I probably wanna use Trex or something like that for the, the decking and the railing, but you know, it could be just pressure treated, painted eventually too, but um.
Yeah, for, for some reason, like concrete steps don't generally require a variance, so I guess uh, a wood structure does. Um, you know, many houses, including mine, have a large hill and they the concrete or the, you know, bricks or whatever are always part of that. Any setback with the the um, random wood type entries becomes a setback issue, but I do see why you're replacing it because the aesthetics are not.
Gonna be a, are you, are you gonna put a porch on this? You gonna put a cover over the stairs?
No, no covers, just the stairs and railings.
Okay.
Did I ask anybody in the audience for the comment? Did I ask on this one yet?
No, you didn't.
Anybody?
I don't see anybody.
Okay. Alright, this is also, it, it appears to be a minor variance, although it doesn't, it's thirteen feet, but given the layout of property and then what the applicant's looking to do, it's not gonna, I don't think it's gonna have any kind of negative impact on the neighborhood. I would move that we grant the application, replace the existing porch with the same setback of twenty-seven feet, minimum forty is required at thirty-three thirty Peter Lane with usual stipulation, this, this pertains only to the requested variance, not the remainder of the property line. And that it be built in substantial conformity to the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Alright. Yeah, one uh little wrinkle is, so the plans that we submitted at first were um it, the, there was like a curve and going into that uh like nook next to the stairs, next to that electric meter and things. Because the architect said, oh, if you put it behind the garage, you wouldn't need the variance. Uh, but uh Brad, uh, the, the buildings inspector assigned to it denied that uh permit. But he, so I, I asked him, well, can you write the denial letter such that I could have it in the same place and not need that jog and extra footings and more space? And he said that he could do it that way.
Well, the application says same setback.
Yeah, it's the same setback, but the plans that I submitted are um.
But what's built there is what you're actually leaving there, correct?
Yeah, that's exactly what I wanna do. What's.
Instead of saying build per plans submitted, I'm gonna change it to as already built.
Yeah, i- in that same footprint is exactly what I'm looking to do.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Our next applicant is Di Bartolo.
Hello?
Good evening, Mr. Di Bartolo.
Hello?
Hello?
We're here.
Alright, how's everybody?
We're doing good.
Doing good, thank you.
This is an application for a proposed accessory building with a side yard setback of five feet. A minimum of thirty feet is required. A combined side yard setback of fifty-nine point six feet, then eighty is required. A height of twenty feet, seven and eight inches. Where maximum of fifteen feet is required at ten fifty-six Underhill Avenue. Could you use your name for the record, please?
Eric Di Bartolo, owner.
Hey, Eric, can you just run us through your application?
I um, putting it up for a garage to put my cars in, just a pole barn. Um, I have nothing right now. I have two of my cars underneath tarps and uh, I uh build old cars, so I'm looking for a place to put my vehicles. There'll be uh strictly storage upstairs through a scuttleway. Other than that, it's matching the house as far as what siding, what roofing, everything is gonna stay the same. I just want it to look real nice.
Uh, John, and that's Lan, John Landy. John, I don't, I don't see a uh, a building department memo in here. Was one done?
I, I believe there was one done and sent in.
Anybody have it in their file?
We don't have any objection.
I saw the, I just wanna put in the record if there was an actual memo done. Does anybody have it in their file?
No.
Nope.
No.
We, I know we sent that in a long time ago.
Alright, but there's no objection, correct?
None, no, no objection.
So I have your plans that you submitted. To the, to the basic structure, correct?
Yes, that's it.
That's it?
That is it.
Any changes to it?
Nope.
Now, what size property you want?
Two point one acres.
And where on the property is this structure going?
It's going to go directly across from where my house is. So.
The back?
The side of the house. So if you're looking at my house, it'll be.
Your house, now your house is on the very end of Underle, well, Underle Avenue at the Deconic, correct?
Yes, we're under the Deconic. My neighbor is the Deconic.
So as you're facing the house and the Deconic is on the left, where's the barn?
On the left.
So between the house and the Deconic?
Yes, it's between the house and the Deconic State Parkway.
How far from the Parkway is it?
Well, the ramp is there. Um, that's fifteen, twenty feet from the ramp. That's my property. My property runs right along the edge of the Deconic. Matter of fact, the property, they, when they redid the Deconic years and years ago, they uh moved the ramp and everything over, so some of the property was taken away, was, was under condemnation many, 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 many years ago.
And you said the uh, the reason for the height variance was for storage?
Y- yeah, storage upstairs.
And that's not gonna be finished space?
No.
Anybody in the board?
I went from a very large house to a very small house and now I have boxes everywhere, so I'm just looking for a place to put stuff.
Alright. Anybody in the board have a comment on this?
I, I got a question only in that uh because the Deconic Parkway is a scenic Parkway as far as views from the, from uh what can be seen from the road. Was there any restrictions from the Deconic uh Parkway Authority or any of that as far as, as far as structure? Another visual impact.
I don't have, well, I don't have the mailings, the actual, I don't know what the DOT was contacted or not. As there's required.
DOT was contacted. I remember from the first meeting, Gordon, you had let me know that you sent it to them.
Okay.
Um, and I, I sent the letters. I haven't received anything back. Um, there are quite high trees that I have there and I put in.
Oh, you put a whole row of trees.
I put in a hundred and fifty abreviations to, because the noise coming up to the conic sometimes could be a little loud. So I'm just looking for privacy.
Okay. I wouldn't know, we did a site visit at the house and, and there was a whole new row of trees put up right alongside of the Conic. And the property was cleaned up and fairly well maintained.
Thank you.
Anybody else on the board have a comment?
I think the uh garage is, you know, relative to the driveway also. That's po- part of the reason why you on a two acre property, you can't just shove the garage, you know, somewhere else. It wouldn't really make sense to.
Correct, there is no other garage.
Yeah. Right, so there's no, you put it in the back or anything like that on something like that.
Right.
It all depends on where the man cave is gonna go. Further from the house.
No. Just as long as my tools and my car's going in, it'll be great.
Anybody who's watching us have any comments on the application? Anybody there, Robin?
No, no one's there. Um, Peggy Anne also just wanted to let you know that uh it was sent to the county.
And there's nothing in the file from them, so.
No.
Okay, we don't seem to be as popular as we usually are. Okay, given uh, given all that we've heard, uh, I would move that we grant the application for a proposed accessory building with a side yard setback of five feet. A minimum of thirty feet is required and a combined side yard setback of fifty-nine point six feet, a minimum of eighty feet is required. A height of twenty feet, seven and eight inches where a maximum of fifteen is, is permitted at ten fifty-six Underhill Avenue with usual stipulation that this pertains to the requested variance only, not the remainder of the property line. And that the structure be built substantially in conformity to the plan submitted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor? Alright. Hey.
Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
Alright, we have Worktown Jazz. That was Mike Grace, John?
Yeah, I'm here.
See his name, but I don't see his face. He must be there. Alright, this is an application to relocate an existing sign with a new setback of zero feet. A minimum of five feet is required. This is at thirty-two twenty Crampon Road. That's the Lowe's Shopping Center. Mr. Grace Revio, there you are.
Yeah.
Wanna run us through your application?
Excuse me?
Wanna run us through your application?
Oh, it's a, it, it, this is for the monument sign that's on pad B, which is a middle pad. Uh, that is now uh being developed with the Starbucks. And the, in order to accommodate some of the infrastructure on that pad B, which is a little pad, the sign has to move close to the property line. Uh, you may be um, recall that the um DOT did a taking in, in front of higher property.
Alright, well, they made the road bigger.
Right, so they, I think, I think they shortened it by um the front by twenty-five feet. Now, this is just to accommodate the uh, the relocation of the existing monument sign closer to the um, front property line. It's not clear how close it's gonna be, so that's why the variance was zero where five would otherwise be required. It's gonna land somewhere between the two dimensions.
We have a couple of memos. We've one dated March twelfth from the planning board. Uh, they met on March ninth. Sign will, will be over ten feet away from the curb line on Route two and two and therefore will not cause any significant impacts. Done by the planning board on October seventh, two thousand nineteen, so they have no objection. We have a memo from the Abaca. They also have no objection. We have a memo from the building department. The Abaca memo was dated March twelfth. The building department memo was dated March sixth. They have no objection. Well, that being said, anybody on the board have any comments on this? Oh, okay. Anybody watching us have any comments on this?
No, there's no additional people in the meeting.
Okay, based upon all of that, I move that we grant the application to relocate an existing sign with a new setback of zero feet, a minimum of five feet required. At thirty-two twenty, thirty-two twenty Cromtown Road. Um, I also move that the stipulation be that it's uh, did you, did you submit a sample to Abaca and to the planning board?
It's the exact same sign that's there, it's just being.
Just being. So it's as to the existing sign?
Yeah, yeah, it's just the existing sign.
Correct, it's as to the existing sign?
Excuse me?
It's an existing sign?
It's the, it's the sign that is already there. It's just being moved.
So it's just relocating the existing sign. Okay, so we don't have to add any stipulation. So I move that that be granted. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Everyone's well, I, I take it?
All far.
Yep. Get up, get out of bed, it's another day.
We're never well.
Well, I believe that concludes everything we have on the agenda. I would therefore move that we adjourn this meeting to next month. Do I have a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good night, we're adjourned, happy zoning.